Hello, there, there we go. Um, hi, thank you and welcome for joining us with Black River Falls School Board Forum tonight here at Red Creek. My name is Bobby Wies, I am the BRF Elementary PTO President. Uh, our system tonight is we're gonna be starting out with a four minimum, four minute maximum introduction of each candidate. And then we are gonna go dive into the questions that are either submitted beforehand or um here live and also on Facebook. Um, I also want to mention that we do have a candidate, um Ron Corked. And he has self-elected to quarantine, so he is actually not going to be here tonight to join us. So um if we're gonna start with Mr. Dobbs and work our way down to do our introductions and then we will head into our questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks Bobby. Um, good evening, uh, my name is Brad Dobbs. Uh, I, uh, my wife and I have two young boys, we live in Rockaway. Uh, I've been on the school board for one year so far. I was appointed to fill in a vacated position in January. Uh, currently I teach leadership and business development at Western Technical Top College. Uh, I also adjunct for UW Cross and Mitterburg where I, I teach primarily operations management, but several topics in business. Um, prior to entering education in 2013, um, I was working in management in a very variety of uh distribution and manufacturing facilities. Uh, I supervise salaried and hourly staff in both union and non-union employment. Um, I'm also a Marine Corps veteran, I deployed to Iraq twice and about a dozen other countries for training purposes. Um, I left service as a gunnerie sergeant to return to grad school. Um, I've learned a lot in this last year, uh, one year is definitely not enough time to spend on the school board. Really, I, I feel like I'm just getting my, my feet underneath me and I, I hope to be able to continue this work for at least three more years. Thank you.
Testing. Hi, I am Nick Elsted, I'm from Hickston area, grew up in Hickston area, the, the, basically the, the area my whole life. About half mile down the road from where I grew up. And then ninety, nineteen ninety-eight graduated from Black River Falls High School. After I went to high school, I went to Western Wisconsin Technical College for welding and gravitating program. Graduated from that and um in two thousand, I started my business that I run now, next welding and gravitating. I've been starting when I was twenty years old, we had it for like twenty-two years ago, so. Um, now I have all forty employees. Uh, my wife Leslie and I have three sons that attend Black River Falls Schools and one's in Red Creek, one's in the middle school and one's in Gibbard. Got lucky when I married my wife because she's an accountant, so that worked out well for me. This, this is a bar on my map, it's well named. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ross Goldsmith, I am a nineteen ninety-two graduate of Black River Falls School District. Uh, my wife and I raised our two children, Joshua and Anna, here in Blackford, both of them graduated from the Black River Falls School District. Um, once I was done with high school here, I joined the military with the Wisconsin National Guard, did ten years in that. That helped pay for my schooling at North Central Technical College in Wasaw where I had an associate's degree in architecture, like commercial design. I've worked in various positions, um, using that degree in one way, shape or form. Currently I work for Davis Furniture, doing estimating for them and uh looking to help the school district and be part of the community.
Good evening, uh, thank you everyone for taking the time out of the day to show up, but it shows that the school district is, is paying attention and they care. Uh, my name is Matthew Lind, I'm new to the area compared to everyone else. Um, I grew up in southeast Wisconsin, joined the Marine Corps, did twenty years and retired. I'm a, I'm a father of five, I have two adult sons and I have three in the school district. And uh, my, my biggest regret, probably my only regret from joining the Marine Corps, is it took time away from my children. And uh, my, my adult sons didn't get time with me, I didn't, I didn't get time to, to do all the things that I would like to have done with them. And my goal here with my three kids, I moved up to, to Black River Falls to be closer to my parents so that they could be grandparents of my children for the first time. And so my goal is to be at every parent teacher conference, at every game, every, uh, every time they sing for Christmas, I wanna be there. I wanna be at every single thing. And uh, and uh, it's difficult for someone who's been in the military for, for a while to, uh, to feel like you have roots. And uh, everywhere I've gone, the problem has been, everybody looks at you like you're a transient. Everyone looks at you like he's gonna be gone in a year, there's no point. Here is where I wanna put roots. I want my, my youngest son to have gone from pre-K to senior year of high school in the same school with the same friends. So, and when I got here, I saw problems. And because I have time and I wanna be involved, I wanted to see if I could help fix those problems. Thank you.
My name is, um, can you hear me? My name is Iftikhar Ahmed Mehman. I was born and raised Republic of Pakistan. I have earned two bachelor degrees, two master degrees, half a PhD.
Iftikhar, it's not on.
How do I know?
So the people at home are saying they're having a hard time hearing and I'm right in the front row with the sound all the way up, so I am sorry, but I may sit right in front of you as you talk.
That's good, let me redo it, my format is now clicked in. My name is Iftikhar Ahmed Mehman, I was born and raised Republic of Pakistan. I have earned two bachelor degrees, two master degrees, half a PhD from the best universities of the world, including University of Minnesota. I have been teaching from last nineteen years domestically and internationally. And from last twelve years, I have been teaching in Black River Falls School District on the behalf of Ho-Chung Nation. And sometime, parents hire me individually to teach their children in their homes, schools. And sometime Jackson County Social Services require my service to help someone in ASEAN or in Black River. So a lot of parents and social services contact me to help a student and I do it. Once I pitches in, there is no way that he or she or them will not become successful. They will become successful for sure. So in Black River Falls School District, I have been teaching physics, chemistry, math, biology, economics, and psychology with the help of Tony Berger because psychology is not my major. And I have been very successful teaching all these subjects with the appropriate profession. And also in mathematics, we have a five divisions, algebra, arithmetic, and also geometry, trigonometry, all those five sections of a big science mathematics and I have been teaching all those. I am running for the school board because I would like to fix the lost education from last two years when the pandemic kept in with the full speed. Schools were on and off close all across the world. Children have lost the education all across the world. And I would like to provide my services in Black River Falls School District. Thank you for listening to my intro, do not forget to ask me any question.
I wanna remind people that they can, how they can ask questions, and Nick, I think you're up first this time, so I'll put it right by you.
Okay, so now we are going to start with the question, uh, part, and I actually have a submitted question that was sent to Dr. Severson. So we're gonna start with this question first and Nick, we're gonna start with you first and then go, go around and then come back to Brad. Um, the question is, does the candidate think that protecting students is a responsibility of the school and its employees? Um, it says if they need further clarification, this is specifically regarding comments made at a previous school board meeting that is not the school's job to protect students against the coronavirus pandemic.
Well, I guess it is the school's responsibility to a certain extent to protect, or all the kids that do walk through the door. I guess if you're referring to masks, I, I'm opposed to, I think it should be optional. Cause um, I think we're in the hind end here hopefully of this pandemic and it seems like everywhere you go except for the school, it's optional, so. And I also believe that, well, I know that at all their neighboring schools, it's optional and there's such a thing as a school choice. So if we don't wanna lose more kids to the neighboring schools, I think we should be on the same playing field as the neighboring schools when it comes to the mask mandate. And I guess every morning we wake up, there's risk and reward, you know? You get out of bed, you could, you could die from something, I mean, every student on the bus, walking and cross the street, whatever, there's a, there's a chance. So you have to weigh out the risk and reward.
Same question.
No, I think, hello, there we are, no, I think I remember it, no, um, no, I don't believe it is the school's responsibility for protection. Okay, um, most parents deal with that every day. As Nick alluded to, you can lock out your front door and you could get struck by lightning or whatever. You can't protect everyone all the time. Superintendent Severs and I, we've had discussions about this, that the masks would not, the problems in the school district would be there, but they wouldn't be as large if they'd have listened to the parents during the survey that went out in August. When the optional and not at all were the higher numbers. So for a school district to say that they protect the kids one hundred percent of the time is inaccurate. I've come to school board meetings in the past with parents to be their safety valve, if you will, for stuff that happened to their students in the school that was reported and nothing was done. And when that student finally had enough and defended themselves, in my opinion, they were, um, suspended, I believe it was. There's three different incidents where I came in on that. So, no, the school does not protect the students, that is the parent's job, it's specifically dealing with the coronavirus. Parents know their kids, if the kids are sick, they stay home, if they're not, they go to school. Thank you. I believe that, uh, that the school is not an independent entity. The school is an extension of the community. The school board, that's the reason for the school board, that's the reason why we elect people, to represent the community. So the school board votes as representatives of the community and the school follows what the school board has, has voted on. So no, it is not technically the school's responsibility, it's the parent's responsibility and the taxpayer's responsibility as represented by the school board. That's how this country works, that's called federalism, that's how it works. Thank you.
I personally believe, um, can you hear me, uh, this?
Yeah.
Yeah, now, now I am kicked in, yes. I personally believe this is a school responsibility to take care of the student all time, as long they are there, eight hours, in the gyms and corridors, in the classrooms, wherever they are, protect them as much as they could. And far as this COVID nineteen pitches in across the world, disturb the whole world. I would go to the appropriate experts, for example, two and a half hours away, there is Rochester, Minnesota. There is a clinic, Mayo Clinic, and Mayo Clinic is the best clinic in the entire universe. We will ask those experts to let us know if masks work or not work. We will not listen only federal government, state government, CDC, but we would like to listen the appropriate set of expert sitting two and a half hours away from us. Let's see what they, what is their expertise in virology? So that we can make a decision on the basis of the science and the support, support of the best doctors of the universe, the known universe. So this is how I stand for the coronavirus.
All right, uh, the question is, is the district responsible for protecting the students? I, I, I believe absolutely and it, this isn't just, uh, this isn't just COVID, this is, to Nick's point, it's crossing the street. Um, it's, uh, and we recently had a discussion with a concerned parent about a, a crossing, uh, location. Um, I, I believe it is the district's responsibility to protect students. As far as masking, um, I, I do believe, as Nick said, um, we're transitioning from pandemic to endemic here soon and masking is probably soon coming to an end, um, not just in our district, but in, in all the surrounding districts as well. Um, but, uh, students, they have a lot of challenges, uh, there's concerns about drugs in schools, gun violence in schools, all this thing. And, and I believe that our job is to protect our students.
Okay, so now we're gonna start with a live question, so if someone wants to raise their hand, I would like you to introduce yourself and then, um, ask a question. So do I have any volunteers, if anybody asks for the question? No takers.
Oh, there we are, there we are.
Do you wanna come up, do you wanna come up here?
My question, oh, my name is Joseph Chalakoff and my question is to... There we go, now we got it. My, my question is, is, um, I overheard, um, you say that you wanted to focus on problems that you see in the school district and for all the candidates, I guess that's pretty much the same question that I have for all. And how would you guys go about, um, mending those problems that you see?
Okay, so Ross, we're gonna start with you, okay?
Okay, just to make sure I understand the question, broad sense, the problems within the school district, how would I fix them? Uh, I'm flattered that you think I can do it by myself. First off, there needs to be changes within the school board. I've been to school board meetings, I've seen the disregard by certain board members to parents who are speaking. There's all this talk about bringing the community together and we all have to work together and blowing someone off is the quickest way to make sure that does not happen. We need parents, parents need to keep stepping up, they need to keep holding board members accountable. If I get on the board, myself included, I'm, I'm in the community. I'm at the school in the winter time, pretty much four days a week with wrestling, with the youth program. I'm all over Facebook, you know, people can find me, I am not afraid to speak my mind on pretty much any subject. And if I don't know the answer, I'll tell you and I will do my best to find out that answer. But it is working together with the administration, with the parents, to get to a common ground. It is not a top-down, this is how it's gonna be, just because I'm in this position. Thank you. I think, uh, what I was referring to is, uh, I've, I've seen a lot of schools. I've, um, I've been to, we've lived in, what, six states and then another country? So, um, I've seen a lot of schools and I've never seen one where the, the parents and the teachers had such an, ad, well, maybe not the teachers, maybe more the administration, had such an adversarial relationship with one another. It, it should be a partnership, these are our children. There are problems in this school and if you can't see that, that a forty percent, uh, reading at grade level rate is not good, is not what we're shooting for, then you're not paying attention. We have to fix these problems and we have to do it together. And the only way for us to do that, it, I've been told, ever since I had children, I wish the parents were more involved. Well, you know what, most people go to work and they come home and they put their feet up and they're like, man, that was a rough day. And they don't pay attention to the things that aren't broken. If you're a mechanic and the car is working, you don't take it apart, you leave it, cause it's working. It's not working anymore, so we need to fix that, we need to come together, now the parents are involved. Whether it was COVID or whether it was any something else that brought us together, it brought us together and now the parents are involved because we realized there's something wrong. So we need public input, we need parents and parent involvement, we need to be able to see what's being taught in our classrooms. We have a, a, a program called Canvas that's used in middle and I believe high school. It's a wonderful program, but it's barely used. I, I can't see any, there are ways to, to put the actual teaching materials. I taught for four years in Pensacola, taught avionics to, I've never taught sixteen-year-old students or seventeen-year-old students, but I've taught eighteen-year-old students, whole classroom's full of them, I taught two thousand in four years, I got a medal for it. I, I put my teaching materials up on the podium and I said, anytime you wanna come take a look at these teaching materials, come look at them. Every answer to every test is in this book. If you wanna know the answer, it's in here, I'm not hiding anything from you, you listen to me, you take notes. If you missed some of the notes, come up to the teaching podium, take them, copy them, do whatever you want. We shouldn't be hiding answers, we shouldn't be, uh, taking the children, uh, or the parents and separating them from what their children are being taught. You know how hard it is to get a kid to tell you what they learned that day? Stuff, that's what you're gonna get. So it would be much easier for me to be able to see the actual teaching materials, the, the worksheets, whatever you've been doing and actually look at it. This is how, coming together is how we're gonna fix this, thanks.
Just one moment. She asked that you put your nameplate in front of the camera when you're speaking next time around, okay?
Yeah, it's working, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's cool, it's cool, do have a problem, no doubt about it. Therefore I am running for this office to fix the lost education, especially in last two years. The seventh graders has gone to, can you capture me?
Yep, you're good, you're all good.
Okay. I would like to see, like, you know, seventh grader have moved to the eighth grade, did they finish the syllabus of the whole year during pandemic? The ninth grader went to a tenth grade, tenth grade is the very serious business in the world. This is where the student will make a decision of his or her life, what he or she wants to be. So he will put in, he will put, he or she will put the time in a chemistry or physics or biology or economics. But during the pandemic, the education was lost. And therefore I want to be in the school, if my fellow citizen elects me to be a board member, I want to be in this school and evaluate each student's grades with the permission of the parents. The school board members have no power to open up any, but any student's profile. Only teachers have a power to open up the profile and to see all details, medical details, psychological details and educational details. So if the parents will allow me, I will definitely open up their, their profile and find out what they are missing in education. However, Black River Falls School District is not the richest, they don't make money in that bathroom, they don't have that much money. Therefore, I will personally will contact DPI, US Department of Education and Ho-Chung Department of Education. Everybody pitches in and help and I will definitely do that, thanks.
If you further waste your name, Charles.
That'll work, okay. All right, um, I, I think, uh, everyone would probably agree that the number one challenge facing the district right now is academic achievement. There's always room for improvement, um, if, if it was easy to do, every district in the state would be scoring a hundred on the report card and none of the districts in the state are scoring a hundred on the report card. Uh, I, I think the biggest thing we can do to affect our academic achievement is attendance. Um, we know we have a, a low attendance rate as a district compared to the state averages. And to get there, I, I think it's engagement and, and I think we had a lot of good comments around that. I truly believe that it takes a village, uh, we have to work with all of our community partners, we have to work with parents, we have to work with staff, we have to work with students. Um, we have to get everyone engaged and, a- as I like to say, rowing in the same direction and I think that's, that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Okay, good. Um, well, I guess there's, I'm gonna say, I don't know how to run a school, but one thing I do know how to run is a business and, uh, I guess I would run it like a business, you know? The way I see it, the customers are the parents. So you have customers, you figure out what they want, what they need, what they're, what's important to them and try to accommodate them. The products you're turning out are the children and they're not all the same product, you have to realize that, you know, some kids, uh, you know, wanna go to a four-year college and be a brain surgeon, some kids wanna go to college and be teachers, some kids wanna get in the trades and work and make money right out of school, some wanna go to tech school, some don't know what they wanna do and there's challenges with that too. And, uh, I do have some ideas for some of the kids that don't know what they wanna do that in high school that would probably really help them out a lot and it won't cost the school any money. Which I think is very important too, cause if you're in the business, it's important to not spend money where you're not getting anything out of it. And then employees, that's the teachers, you know, you gotta take care of your employees, treat them well, hold them accountable and, uh, pay them for their successes and productivity and when they do good, treat them good. So I guess that's the, how I would run it, the, the school and, um, just going from my life lessons and, uh, one of, some of the lessons you learn, that you learn the most from are the hard ones, so. But problem-wise, yes, I guess keeping the kids interested in school is very important. So they wanna come to school and learn and, and challenge them, teach them respect and, and pride in what they do. And that'll, um, go a long ways in their lives. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, for those of you that are joining us on Facebook Live, uh, please continue commenting. Um, but if you do have a question, could you please just make sure it's clear and concise and then we will definitely ask the candidates? Um, I do have a question from our Facebook Live video and if you hear some random alarms in the background, there is a basketball game going on. And if you hear some random alarms in the background, there is a basketball game going on, so that is what is going on. Someone from Facebook Live has asked if it's not the school's job to protect the kids while okay, hold on. If it, okay, while they are there, whose job is it? And we can start with Matthew.
You got me.
Yep, I'm just gonna get your name if that's more possible. There we go. There we go.
I, I believe I already answered this pretty adequately. It's, the, the school itself is, is responsible, but they're not the ones who make the decisions. They're just following out what the community has decided what the rules should be. Safety can mean so many different things and I think this question is, is really, is really broad. And you know what? So I'm gonna open it up to intellectual safety. Nobody's asked about it yet. I figured somebody might. But the, people have been saying that, that banning books, that people are banning books. And one, one of the big ones right now is, is a comic book called Mouse that, that apparently is being used for, to describe the Holocaust, which is great if that's what you want. If that's what the community wants to, to give to the children, then that's, that's fine. However, this book is not being banned. I just checked on Amazon, it's fourteen forty-nine, and you can get it in two days if you have Prime. So unless you live where I do, and then you, you're lucky if you get it in a week. But the whole point of this is, it's not being banned. It's, it's being decided by school districts, by school districts who are run by school boards, who are representatives of the people. So we decide what, what we should show our children, right? We decide what our intellectual level for our children should be, right? It's not just for, for these books that you like, it's for every book. I mean, we don't put Fifty Shades of Grey in our, in our elementary school libraries, right? So why should we, we do have a line. There's a delineation there. We just have to decide where that is. So when you, when it comes to safety, the school board itself or the, is what decides what, what the rules are, how to keep children safe. And the school itself, the school is what executes that. Thank you.
Please don't move that.
Oh, in this stadium? Okay. It is the school responsibility to protect the students all time. In playgrounds, classrooms, corridors, and everywhere in the school jurisdiction for those eight hours. And academically, we also protect them so they can be intellectually superior. And I will stand with this, that it is the responsibility of the school and administration to protect the students. And especially the Black River Falls High School and Middle School teachers, they are diehard teachers. They can do anything to protect the children and I was the eyewitness for twelve years straight. And I was from the Pakistan, none of the teachers, no student ever called me a terrorist. They welcome me and love me and respect me. Therefore, it is the duty of these high-qualified teachers and administration to protect the student. Thank you.
All right, as I said before, I do think it's the district's responsibility to protect our children. And, and I don't really care what the threat is, whether it's drugs, whether it's violence, whether it's COVID. We have to protect our children. I, I think that's our responsibility. I don't want, I don't think any parent wants to put their children on the bus and then worry about if they're gonna be safe all day. That's, that's not our role as a district. Our, our job is to protect our students.
Yeah, I do feel it is a district's responsibility to protect kids, you know? Just like if you send your kids to a babysitter. Not that a school should be a daycare, but you know, I guess you need to protect the kids from the other kids. And whatever else there might be, I guess, like gun violence, other violence, drugs, which definitely is a problem in this community unfortunately. And but I guess there needs, you gotta understand that, you know, like I said, every day there's risk reward. And yeah, this is life, so we need to figure it out accordingly. And can't protect everything, so the rest, kids need to go to school to learn too, so. But I guess just make the best decision that we can.
Move it closer to you if I could. There you go.
Okay, well, I guess I'm kinda gonna be the odd man out here compared to everybody else. The school's job, in my opinion, is to teach the kids. The parents, again, are teaching the kids right from wrong. Now, I'm not saying that the schools need to be the Wild, Wild West or the OK Corral. There are rules in place that Matt had alluded to that are set up by the school district. And that's fine. That's what they're there for. That's what they were elected there for. But to say that the teacher's number one job is to protect students, that's, in my opinion, not their number one job. Their job is to teach. I mean, we talked about gun violence, we talked about drugs. And I know in ninety-two, when I was in school, the Black River Falls School District was still a drug-free zone and they were still there. I can only imagine in twenty-twenty-two that it is now one hundred percent drug-free. They're not walking around anywhere. That's not even rational thinking. So if they're failing that way of protecting the kids using the examples, then what else are they failing at? And as was alluded to earlier, when you have a forty percent at grade level, reading level, that kinda stands out. So no, the school dis, the schools are not there to protect. You have the rules that are in place. The parents are supposed to be teaching as well as the teachers. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so now we are going to go to a live in-person question. Do you wanna, you wanna, okay. Can you say your name and then your question?
My name is Paige Blackbeer and here's my question. As a student and an active member of this community, I have a question for you all. We see each day that our community is becoming more diverse. And as a school board member, I feel so it would be your job to help the students. And you all said you were worried about academic advancement and engagement. So to engage all students, they would have to become more comforted and welcomed in the school and in the school district. So how specifically would you guys ensure that?
Please explain your question again.
Paige, you wanna come stand right in front so that we're sure the floor doesn't ask you? So our school district and our community has been becoming more diverse. We see it every day. And everybody said they were worried about academic engagement and how you do in the school district. And I was saying that for everyone to be able to be engaged and do well in the school district, they have to be welcomed and feel comfortable in the classroom and in the district. So how would you all ensure that the student feels comfortable and safe?
In Black River Falls School District, it is very diverse community. We have a student from Ho-Chung, Onaidas, Lakotas, Dakotas, Cheyenne, Apaches, Minamans. And many other Native Americans. Students are in Black River Falls School District. They are largest, they are the largest minority in Black River Falls School District. And our expert teachers always welcome them. There is no concept of a racism, zero tolerance. We respect each and everyone in the school district already. However, we are lacking expert teachers such as teachers who have a degree in a chemistry, a teachers who have a degree in physics, a teachers who have a degree in economics. We do not have appropriate teachers as yet. I would like to definitely contact DPI, US Department of Education, Ho-Chung Edu, Ho-Chung Education Department, that please hire the people with the appropriate expertise so that we could give appropriate education to our diverse community. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank, thank you for your question and a great one at that. So this is a challenge everywhere. And one, one of the things that we like to see is students have a teacher who looks like them, right? And that's maybe superficial, but I think it's important that we recruit from our local community. We would love to see some of our current and former students come back and teach in Black River Falls. There's also some things just learning about these cultures. And, and for example, Luke Metz, our, our high school principal, recently had a, a traditional Ho-Chung meal with the family. And things like this that help us to learn about those around us, that help us to understand. And also, all of our students need to feel comfortable here. So I, I don't want anyone to feel discriminated against because of whatever it is, whether it's disability or color of their skin or gender or any of that, any, any of the reasons we can be discriminated against. So I, I wish I had an easy answer. If I had an easy answer, we'd be doing it today. But it's something we must work towards. Thank you.
Hello. I believe it starts with teaching the kids, you know, that respect others the way you would wanna be respected and treated. And a little bit about the different cultures of people that are in the community. And also that, you know, great people are also treated great, you know? So the way that they act represents how they're gonna be treated, just like if Tanar said that he's from Pakistan and he's always been treated greatly and not like a terrorist. And that's probably because he's been a great person and gained respect from his peers.
As Brad said, I wish I had an easy answer for this one, because it's really difficult to say. We do have a great, many different demographics in Jackson County, in the Black River Falls School District. And trying to get everyone to get along every single day is not gonna happen. For me to come into a classroom and say, Angela, correct? Your first name? Paige, I'm sorry. Paige, you have to now today go and sit next to Amy over there the entire day and be her friend. That's really not gonna make anybody more comfortable, feel more safe or anything like that. Or you have to come here and sit next to me all day long. We go where I go, you have to go. And that's not right either. But this does come down to students caring about their fellow students, okay? I'm not in the school. I don't have kids in the school district anymore, okay? But I know when my kids were in school and when I was in school, there was a certain group you always hung out with. Call them, my day and age, they call them cliques. The jocks hang with the jocks, you know, the cheerleaders hang with the cheerleaders, the mechanics hang with the mechanics, and those that did the stuff they're not supposed to do, they hung out with their own, okay? But if you want to get more peace is not the right word, but in the school, it starts with you. Who have you reached out to today or yesterday to see how they were doing? Like I said, I'm not in the school. You are. There's only so much the teachers can do in an eight-hour day with, what's the class size now? Sixteen?
Depends what level you're talking at.
Well, she's high school level, so high school.
Twenty-four, thirty.
Okay, so in an eight-hour day, the teachers are seeing two hundred-plus students a day. They can't catch everything. So to make the schools a better place and more comfortable and safe falls back on the students to do what you can to keep everybody on an even keel. And sometimes that's just giving somebody a simple smile. Thank you.
I, I don't know how we got away from Martin Luther King Jr.'s Colorblind Society, which is what we were striving for for decades and we were making progress. And then somehow it got turned completely around to where now I've been talking to minority members who welcome segregation, who want it. I, it, it boggles my mind. I don't understand it. There are some people who think that they want, some people to be more equal than others. There's no such thing. Equal is equal. Everyone, we should all be colorblind. We should all, we should all want to treat each other with the same respect as everyone else. There is no reason for, for a, a child of, of a different race to feel any different than, than the child sitting next to him. That, that's absolutely ridiculous that that would happen. So there are a lot of problems in society. I think that, that Black River Falls School District can be a model for how, for how everyone can get along, all races can get along. We need to be colorblind. We need to follow Martin Luther King Jr.'s example.
Okay, we are going to take a Facebook Live question. What are the areas of concern regarding student achievement in the district? And do you have specific suggestions for improvement? And we are gonna start with Mr. Dobbs, please.
Well, all areas of student achievement. And this is, you know, the state report card leans heavily on math and English language, obviously those. But that's not the only reason, or excuse me, the only measure of student achievement. We look at a lot of things like the number of advanced placement courses, college credits earned, all that kinda stuff. But all areas are, are really important. We can't, we can't pick one area above the other because not everything is relevant to what everyone wants to do. For example, math is more important if you are going to, or maybe more important if you're going to pursue some sort of post-secondary education. Otherwise, when we look at things like we've got the Vex Robotics and, and Mechatronics and, and those type of things, if you want to enter that realm, or we have, as Nick would know, right? We have a lot of welding courses, which Nick loves to see, I'm sure. So looking at, at participation in those courses. So academic achievement is really kind of a sticky issue to measure. As far as recommendations, like I said before, that one of the leading indicators of academic achievement is attendance. And we have to find a way to get attendance up. And again, I, I wish I had easy answers for this. But student engagement is, is a key to that. Students need to feel safe. Students need to feel like they want to be there and they're wanted to be there. And it's not just someplace they are supposed to go from seven to three. So sorry, I, I don't have the answer, but that's, that's the direction we need to move.
I think we're back. We're back, sorry.
Hi. Student achievement, I guess, a few of the things that I gathered from my two test experiments I have at home is that push students harder. Every day I talk to my kids and ask them, "What'd you learn in school today?" They're like, "Not much." "What'd you do today?" "Whatever." "You got any homework?" "No." So I think you need to really push kids, you know, send a little homework home to them. Get their parents engaged in their homework with them. I don't know what the laws are and stuff, but I really feel that some classes should be divided up a little bit with your higher learners and your lower learners. Because sometimes the higher learners are just bored. They're sitting there like, "Well, I've known this for a year now, and we're going over this." And it just seems like that'd be a good way to push kids to learn more. I don't know the technicalities of it, but... And anyway, the tech department, that is actually one of my reasons I am running is we have a good tech department right now in high school, but I think it could be a lot better. The facility we have is, you know, the best in the area. One of my goals is if I get on the school board, I've brought up this school choice a little bit, okay? And we're in a deficit on that, like a hundred and forty kids in the twenty-one school year. So a goal of mine would be to have kids coming to this school because of the tech department, because they have so much great opportunities over the neighboring schools that they want to come here because they have a lot of opportunities. And that would also keep them very focused and driven to come to school. Attendance would go up. You know, the high school kids, they're all different and there's reasons they go, you know. If it's to go and weld, or if it's English, or sports, or whatever. But I guess you're just going to need to keep them interested so they show up.
With the whole academics, when my son was in school, it was called No Child Left Behind. I'm not sure if that's still in place, or if it's been changed by a different name. But basically, knowing that a student has a problem in the grade school, in the middle school level, and keep kicking the can down the road, so to speak, till they get to high school, and then they start to fail, that needs to be changed. Get rid of it, throw it out, do whatever. I know it's a federally funded program, and there's money tied to that. But kicking a problem down the street doesn't fix it. If you know a student is having issues at a grade level in a math, a science, and English, or whatever, hoping the next teacher can fix that problem doesn't fix the problem. You disillusion kids by pushing them through, thinking that they're going to get better. And then when they get to high school, they get slapped with the reality, and they don't want to come to school. I think we need to get rid of the D average for extracurricular activities. Now, it was just, you know, last week that I was in high school, but you had to maintain a C average to play in any sports. I've always said, "You set a high standard for kids, and they will hit it with amazing accuracy." Unfortunately, the other way is true too. You set the bar low, and you'll be amazed at how many can get underneath it. Thank you. It seems like not just here, but everywhere, some people really, really hate state testing. They really dislike it. The problem is, it's the only metric we have to figure out if the kids are learning what we want them to learn or not. The state decides, which means us, we're the state, we decide what we want our children to know at certain levels. And they need to be tested so that we can figure out if they know it. That's what success is. Success is not the child feeling good about themselves, but the child actually learning what we want them to learn. So when it comes to testing, if we could find another way to do it, fine. But we need to figure out if they know what we want them to know. And the, the goal is not, or the answer is not to change the metrics so that now they're passing. That's not, that's not the solution to this. Because then they still have the same core skills. It just looks better on paper. So if, if we could find another way besides standardized testing to figure out if the kids know what we want them to know, then present it. I sent my child in South Carolina to a Montessori school. And my wife and I thought this was going to be the greatest thing ever. They learn at their own pace. It's all, it's all free. They have animals in the classroom. It's, oh, this is great. This is really cool. She did that for a year. You know what she did? She played all day, and she learned nothing. So when she got to the next school, she was completely behind. She was a grade behind. So we need to figure out a way to figure out if these kids know what we want them to know. That's our, that's our main goal. And if we can make them feel better about themselves on the way, fine. But we need to figure this out. We need to get them to learn math and reading immediately.
For, for the student achievement is very important. It, it start out with the better mental health, which is sports. Sports will keep their mental health very active, so they could be very good in academic. And Black River Falls School District always encourage sports, of all kinds of sports. PT exercise in the morning, in the evening. So that's good. And the rest of the subjects are also very important, math, English. But in order to be an engineer, electronic engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, computer engineer, you don't only need mathematics. You need a high level of physics. So the physics background should be intact in nine, ten, eleven, twelve, four years straight, just like in Europe and Asia, in order to produce an engineer. So therefore, with mathematics, which based on logic, not reasoning. Mathematic is based on reason and logic. Reason means it's my opinion. It's not big, big deal. Logic means three times three is nine. You could ask African-American, Asian, Japanese, German, Italian, American, anybody in the world. Ask them three times three, they say nine. They will keep the racism, prejudice, everything aside. When the signs come, it will give you one answer unanimously. This is how logic works, not the reasoning. Reasoning means it's my opinion. So therefore, we would like to have, I mean, what I, I'm running for the Black River Falls School District to attract people of the highest calibers. Those who have a great degrees, at least masters in physics, so we can produce five engineer a year. And similarly, I would like to have a biochemistry teachers and chemistry teacher with a master degree. I don't think so. Black River Falls School District has more than five or seven teachers have a master degree. A few have a doctorate. Majority of them have a bachelor degree. So it's good, I have thirty seconds more to go. So I would like to attract the people of the highest caliber to help our student to be successful in their academic. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now, you had a question. Would you mind coming up here?
Yes, I'm Patty Jacobson. And I just have a question. As a school board member, what do you see a parent's role, and how would you see a parent's role in the education of their child? And what would you do to support that role?
I'll leave her up first, right?
Okay, the parent's role in teaching a child and raising a child is to, number one, to teach them discipline and respect, and help them with learning, and I guess take them to where they need to go for extracurricular activities. And I guess how we... Well, I guess listening to the parents and what they're, what they want their children to be learning and pushing them to be very successful is how I would help the parents and listening to the parents and what the parents should be doing. And I guess, you know, teacher conferences and have the teachers and parents engaged on a daily basis sometimes, or weekly.
Can I get the question one more time, please?
As a school board member, what do you see as the role of the parents in the education of their child?
As a school board member, what do you see the parent's role is in the education of their child? And how can the school board members support that role?
Thank you. The parents are the first teachers, okay? Like Nick had said, they're there to teach them respect and discipline, you know. I read one time that a toddler will hear the word "know" like fifty thousand times in that year that they're walking around trying to grab everything. So the parents are really the first teachers. They need to be involved with the school, the parent-teacher conference. If there is issues going on in the school, they do need to realize that the teachers are trying their best to help their child. Now, we do have demographics. We do have issues that come up that people take things the wrong way, and it sets people on edge. Being open-minded to listening to parents' concerns as a school board member is paramount. What we can do as school board members, looking at different options that are out there, I think needs to be a bigger focus. I remember one school board meeting this past spring where a family came in and their student is going blind. And Black River doesn't have a Braille teacher. And that's, you know, we talked at another one of co-op-ing with Elma Center on their ASL, or American Sign Language. So there's options out there. I think we need to dig as school board members deeper into finding those options and working with the parents to get their students the, the teaching, or the the technology, or the textbooks, or the supplies they need to succeed. My opinion, I think it could be easily, as easily described as teachers teach what is, parents teach what ought to be. I think that's where the distinction lies. I, I think that if, once a teacher starts teaching opinion, that's where, that's where they should stop. Just short of that line. And I think the way that we, that we encourage parents to be a part of, of this process is transparency. I think that's, that's what's really been lacking. I think transparency has been a real problem. Shouldn't take a FOIA request, two years and ten thousand dollars, to get information out of the school board. So I think it's as simple as that.
Good. Parents' role in a children's education. Very good question. I like that. Psychologist. The first psychologist is the parents, is the mom and dad, is the psychologist. The second psychologists are the teachers. So it's still we, the teachers, on the second, second role, not on the first role. So parents has the great responsibility to make sure the children are, their children are doing homework, understanding it, interacting with the teacher. The second level of psychologists are the teachers. And basically, I came from a different culture, and Black River Falls always loved the cultures of the world. So in my culture, teachers are the mom and dad spiritually. Even though I look like a guy, I am mom and dad spiritually. It means I will not budge unless he or she or they fully understand their homework before they reach their home. So I take the teaching responsibility very sacred, very holy, and very seriously. And I have noticed in a Black River Falls School District, teachers are very good at it. They take the responsibility very seriously. They're not kidding around or joking around. They sit down in the classroom alone, start crying, weeping because their students are not successful. They take it very seriously. And then they try to find out solution, how to help them. And we do help them. But we are still lacking a lot of funds. Hopefully, once I am on the board, I would like to see a lot of money. After all, we are the richest countries in the world. We are not underdeveloping country. We need more money. So therefore, an active board member who can start communicating with the governor, legislatures, DPI, US Department of Education, that we need all these fundings to help the students. Thank you very much.
Parents are the teachers for the first four years before we as a district ever get to interact with these children. So obviously, they're, they're their initial teacher. They're the ones who start their education. And then even when they're within the walls of our schools, we've only got them here for about eight hours a day. So teacher, or excuse me, parents still have another sixteen hours a day that they are responsible for their children's education. I, I think it's important that we work together. We, we must communicate. We must collaborate. Most of that interaction doesn't necessarily happen, well, does not happen at the board level. We have a lot of parent and teacher interaction, not limited to just parent-teacher conferences. We have a lot of, parents volunteer to come into rooms and read books and things like that. And I think it's important that we continue to grow those opportunities, to reach out and, and get more volunteers. There, there is a fair number of parent and board interactions. I've, I've had dozens of conversations in the last year with a huge number of parents about various things within the district. And that, that's great, and I, I think it's important as a board member. But really, as far as when it comes down to the education, a lot of that needs to happen between the parent and between the teacher. Thank you.
Okay, I am going to have a submitted question. And there's actually, it's kind of like a two-part, and then I'm combining them. It says, "Will the candidate allow history teachers to teach their subject without having, having to avoid downplaying or denying the negative actions of our nation? Will the candidate require science teachers to teach the theory of evolution as if they were well, as if they were less supported..." Oh my goodness. "...than other scientific..." Sorry, I'm going to read this again because I... "Will the candidate require science teachers to teach the theory of evolution as if they were less well-supported than other scientific theories?" So Ross, we're going to start with you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, uh, history is to be learned from. It, it's not, it's not good or bad. Have atrocities happened through the course of time? Absolutely. There is not one grain of sand on this entire earth that doesn't have blood on it from one form or another. Learning history in its nitty-gritty crude form is to help make sure that doesn't happen again. Go back to last summer. We had a death in a neighboring state that should not have happened. Doesn't matter what color his skin was or the officers involved, what they were. But based on that, a tragedy that happened, there were cities all across this nation that were burned out, bombed out. There are statues now that relate to our history, the good and the bad, that are no longer seen. And if you can't see it and you can't learn from it, then you're, you're doomed to repeat it again and again and again. For the science, um, could you read that part one more time?
Will the candidate require science teachers to teach the theory of evolution as if it were less well-supported than other scientific methods? As in theory of gravity, germ theory, atomic theory and et cetera.
That's way above my P grade. Um, okay, uh, science, science to me, this, this really sounds that they, like, they want this to be focused on, will I call a girl a guy or will I call a guy a girl? And no, okay? Science is there, you have definitive data that you can learn from, that you can, um, study, you could theorize and you can extrapolate data from it to come up with a correct answer. Um, I have no idea on atomic theory. I count auditorium seating for my job and that's, um, basically it. But science is to learn. Science is gonna have some nitty-gritty and dirty stuff too, that nobody's gonna like to hear. But you know what? Life sucks and you gotta deal with it. Thank you. Uh, there is a factual basis to history. It, it, it's not all opinion. The names, dates, this happened, this didn't happen, that, there are facts. If you can't present the historical record without putting your own spin on it, shouldn't be teaching it. Now, there are, there is room for presenting both sides of an argument. When you're talking current events or you're talking social studies and you present both sides of an argument. If you, as a teacher, cannot argue both sides of the argument, shouldn't be teaching it. You need, you need to either find a way to teach that, teach that way so that you can be equal to both sides or you don't teach it. Now, when it, when it comes to the science thing, she said that the theory of gravity, that's the law of gravity. That's the whole point of a law. A law means it happens every single time, no matter how many times you do it. That's a law. So when you, when you say theory of evolution, that's right, it's a theory. Cause you can't prove it. Nobody's been able to. The, the theory of, the creationism theory, that's all, they're all theories. Nobody knows what happened. So, no, you don't wanna downgrade one for another. You wanna treat every, every theory as, uh, as a, a separate theory, as a separate subject. This is what some people think. This is what other people think. There's a way to do this without denigrating anyone's beliefs. Thank you.
History must be taught positive, negative, both together. All the time, all across the world. We cannot be teaching positive and the rest of the world is teaching positive and negative and they will succeed than us. We want to know where we screwed up. So that we should not screw up again. That is the purpose of learning the negative. So I totally approve positive and negative approaches. That what happened in eighteen sixty-two, Menchado, Minnesota, more than three hundred and five Native Americans were hung. The largest, largest hanging program in the history of the United States. But they were down to thirty-three people under the Lincoln administration. We would like to know what is right and wrong. So we can make a good judgment next time in the future. So I support positive and negative both aspects of the history. Scientific evaluation, theory, theory means something is not proved yet. If tomorrow or maybe Saturday, thirty-five monkeys from the Madison, Wisconsin Zoo start speaking German and English fluently and wearing a clothes and they act like a human, I will take twice what is going on. It's been a more than thousands and thousands of years monkeys don't become human. They never speak English properly. So therefore, theory has to be taught to be understood. And the law, as my friend was talking about, law means universally accepted. No one can deny it. H two O, two atom of hydrogen, one atom of oxygen is the chemical composition of a water. You go Germany, Italy, China, Vietnam, Pakistan, India, Mexico, wherever you go, they unanimously agree on that. Because this is the law of chemistry. It is amazing, they keep their patriotism, racism aside. And they unanimously agree, two atom of hydrogen, one atom of oxygen is the formula to make a water. Drinking water. Thanks.
Uh, so the, the oft cited quote, right? Those who don't study history are doomed to report it. And I think it's important that we, uh, that we analyze history with a, a very keen eye and, and understand that, uh, decisions were made and some, some are mistakes, some were the correct decision. Um, all, history is not clean. There, there's been a, a lot of atrocities, um, o- over the, the known history of man, right? Um, so I, I think it's important that we, we teach that, we understand that. If we don't wanna repeat these, we must understand them. Um, the second question, I think was evolution. Um, so I, I, again, I'll start with a quote, "The mark of an educated mind is to consider an idea and reject it." Uh, so I, I think it's important that we provide in both history and evolution an evidence-based education. I think that we need to, um, need to provide the information to our students. Um, if there are, if they have beliefs one way or another, then again, an educated mind will reject that idea. But I, I think it's important that, um, we use evidence and facts in our education and try and stay out of opinions as much as possible. Thank you.
Um, I guess it's all, everything just needs to be factual. Um, and history should not be erased, needs to be learned from. Um, statues need to stand. That's why I feel, um, religion and politics really should not be pushed upon in school. If the art should be factual and not ideologies and beliefs by teachers.
I thought you started it.
I started.
Yeah, I thought you started it.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. Okay, so on to a question from our Facebook Live. As a board member, you will need to listen and work with others that you may not agree with. Describe a time you have listened openly to someone else and how you have worked with someone you have disagreed with. We're gonna start with Matthew.
Well, you might think the exact opposite, maybe twenty-year Marine, but, uh, but you have to be judicious. You, you, especially, especially with, uh, if you're enlisted and they're an officer or you're a junior officer and they're a senior officer, you have to be very judicious with your words. You, I, I know that a lot of us can come off as abrasive, but we know how to, how to hold our tongue and we know how to be respectful to everyone. And, uh, so my entire career in the Marine Corps, I've, I've been doing that the entire time. So that's not difficult for me. Um, I, I understand that I'm kind of an imposing person. I don't mean to be, but I'm, I, I try to be as, as congenial as I possibly can. So, and I'll, I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Yes. How to work with a disagreement, the people who disagree with me? How could I work with them? I will work with them very perfectly fine. It is perfectly good and healthy to disagree with each other. But if they are disagree that three times three is not nine, I will hold my ground very tight. Because I know the principal will fire me up on the spot. So therefore, I will disagree on certain, uh, principles of the science. But I can definitely work with every disagreement peacefully. It is not a big deal. I never hesitate to say I am sorry. I, in, and I'm never hesitant to learn from newborn baby or one thousand years old or the one hundred years old man woman. I'm always there to learn and then teach. It is no problem with me to work with the people who disagree with me. It's perfectly fine.
All right, um, so professional disagreements should be just that. We, we are allowed to disagree and, and we must, uh, maintain our professionalism. Um, as a board, we operate under Robert's Rules of Order and the purpose of Robert's Rules of Order is to, uh, um, protect the rights of the minority while enforcing the will of the majority and I, I think that's important. Um, I, I've been on a, a number of boards before. Um, and the, the direction the board decides to go is the direction that the organization will go. And, um, I haven't always agreed with the direction that the board will go, but I, I will absolutely work in that direction. Um, I, I deal with professional disagreements all the time. Um, and it's, it is just that, we have to maintain our professionalism and, uh, and, and we have to move in the same direction. Thank you.
Well, for the people that know me, they probably know that I can pretty much get along with anybody. And, uh, I guess, uh, agree to disagree, I mean, it's, obviously the board is seven people, not one person. So I mean, you're obviously gonna have different views and that's what makes it stronger. So I guess you just need to express your view and, and then everybody hopefully makes the, the best decision for the children and, and the school itself. And, uh, I just really don't need to be right all the time, just some of the time, you know?
Working with people, you're gonna have disagreements. Um, like Matt, like Brad had said with their time in the military, you're gonna have orders that make no sense. I also had fifteen years with the Department of Corrections. And everybody there follows exactly what they say they're gonna do one hundred percent of the time. No, they don't, okay? Being able to talk with people, um, respect is a big thing. You know, respect is given, trust is earned. And if you can't start a conversation with respect, you're never gonna gain trust. I do my best, I fail often at trying to maintain cordial conversations. When you have two people that think they're right, somebody's gonna end up wrong and that usually ends up with hurt feelings. Usually, after I've had time to look back at a conversation, if I was wrong, I do find that person and apologize. And that's not an email, that's not a phone call, that's me coming up to them face-to-face. Go, look, I was wrong, I apologize and let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you, the community members, for their questions. So I have a question here for all of you. So, uh, you mentioned earlier, can you hear me? So you mentioned earlier the special needs child, that was my child. My daughter is going blind. She's been in the school district since she started school from four K. And, there you go.
Again?
Yes.
But you're singing.
Yes, there we go. So one thing that I wanted to make mention that I don't think anybody knew or does know, but the middle school and the high school are not equipped for disabled children. And the reason, I don't think anybody knows that, is because most people do not have disabled children. So this is something that we struggle with on the daily with her, with the advisors. So with that being said, being a parent of special needs, I see firsthand the lack of training for teachers, aides and advisors. What is your past experience with special needs instructions, guidance and teaching? What are your plans on establishing transparency for people services, for the people services division and the CISA four in our school district that we lack?
CISA four?
CISA four.
What is that?
So, um, CISA is a cooperative education, um, services agency. They, uh, we are part of CISA four, there are twenty-six school districts part of that CISA. And they particularly help smaller school districts who aren't large enough to hire some services themselves. We have an occupational therapist, a lot of school districts contract with them for those services, so. And where am I starting? I lost track.
Starting with that question.
Uh, thank, thank you for very sensitive question. And you are sitting next to the Neragansett tribe from Rhode Island. So I would say, of course, we should have a program in the school, Black River Falls School District, for the, this, with, with the dis- with the student with a disability. We will hire the appropriate people. In order to hire the appropriate people is not the problem. The problem is the money, where to get the money to hire those people. Therefore, I'm running for the school board to contact the one of the richest government of the world that gave us the funding to hire the person who could help a person who, who is losing the vision or almost lost the vision. This is what my approach is. I will come after the real deal and get the funding, let's rock and roll. So nobody should ever left behind. George W. Bush signed this act in, signed this act, no child left behind, under any circumstances. However, this bill was written by Bill Clinton long time ago. Thank you for the very good question.
All right, another great question. Uh, this is a huge challenge and one of the challenges we have, uh, as a district is we're not a large district. We do not have, um, the critical mass that, uh, we can really hire full-time staff for every possibility. Um, and that's not an excuse. We, we need to work with CISA four. Um, we, unfortunately, we're, we're seeing a shortage of a lot of special ed teachers in a lot of variety, uh, a large variety of areas. Um, we do need to work to, uh, work on those, all of those individual plans. Um, I do have, uh, so in, in some of my teaching duties now, I have some students with disabilities. Um, I, I, one that I had a meeting with actually today, extended time due to, um, some extreme test anxiety. Um, and so I, I do have some experience with this. Um, it's never easy. Um, again, I, I wish, I wish this was easy. I wish I could say tomorrow, we're gonna change this. But, uh, all we can do is continue to work with you, um, continue to work with all, all of those families. Uh, get you the resources that, that you need, um, a- and try to come to what, an outcome that works, uh, for your student.
Hi, um, I guess this is kinda near and dear to my heart too. I have a almost sixteen-year-old boy is... I have a almost sixteen-year-old boy is, he's like a two-year, two-year-old level. He doesn't talk. Doesn't, he, he can communicate a little bit, but he's severely delayed as a chromusism disorder. So, I mean, it is a challenge. I mean, there's no black and white answer of like, boom, this is the answer, you know? But obviously, money is an issue with these children. I believe the state does maybe contribute a little more to them than the normal children. Teachers are a challenge, you know, getting people that are trained for all the different aspects of the special needs. I guess I'm gonna just say that I don't really have an answer for you, but like I said, it's, it's on my radar. It's, you know? And I'll do my best.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer. I really don't. I had to ask you what CISA four was. So, I don't deal with special needs children that often. Every once in a while, I'll have a young wrestler come through the youth program. Parents just trying to get their child into something to see if they can connect some way, somehow. As a district, you know, focusing on getting your student the resources they need should be paramount. I know in your heart, they're the number one priority. Every parent's child is that to them, I believe. The only thing that I can tell you is if I'm elected to the school board, is I will do my darndest to figure something out, to get something in here for your daughter, correct? And that they're not left behind. Thank you.
First of all, I'm, I'm sorry that you and your daughter are going through that. That's, that's terrible that, that we don't have facilities. Blindness is not so rare that, that we shouldn't have facilities already set up for that. That's amazing to me. There's a, I, I talked to another, another parent that has to, has to drive his daughter five miles to get to the bus stop. They live in the school district. I don't understand this. I don't understand how this could be happening. Now, we've talked a lot about finances here in, in this last question. We pay fourteen thousand dollars per student in Wisconsin. Over. No, no, average in Wisconsin, okay? National average is over twelve thousand, which is higher than our next six competitors combined in the world as far as developed nations. So, there is some sort of mismanagement going on in Wisconsin. I'm not talking about, I, I haven't seen all of Black River Falls School District's finances. I don't know. But what I do know is there are private schools who are teaching out of trailers and getting eighty-five percent reading rates. So, at, at grade level. It's not the money. The money's not the problem. Something else is the problem. We need to figure it out.
My answer already?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so you're gonna go with another Facebook Live question. It says, "We have a very diverse population. How do you plan to work with different communities to reach the common goal of increasing the students' outcomes?" And I'm going to say, this is going to be our last question because we said we would go till eight o'clock. And what I'm gonna do is present, have you guys do this question and then I'm gonna give you each four minutes to do a closing statement about yourself, okay? Brad, you can start with.
Can you read the first question one more time? I'm sorry.
"We have a very diverse population. How do you plan to work with different communities to reach the common goal of increasing the students' outcomes?"
Well, we're, we're ending with a tough one. So, we, we do have a lot of diversity and obviously, our, our largest racial diversity in this area is with the Ho-Chunk Nation. There, there's been some reaching out to the nation. I, I would like to see that increased. That's really the, the biggest chunk. We also have some other groups throughout here. And, and again, I, I go back to, I firmly believe that it does take a village and it's not just about diversity when it comes to race, but we have different socioeconomic status. We have different desired educational outcomes. We have students who, I think Nick said clear back in the beginning, want, wanna enter, enter the trades out of, out of high school. We have students that wanna go to two-year schools, that wanna go to four-year schools, that wanna go on to pursue a doctorate. You know, we have students all over the board and engaging all of them is a challenge. You know, again, I, I keep saying, I wish you had easy answers. That's, I, I've spent a year on the board and I, I haven't found any easy answers for, for anything yet. But it, it's continuing that collaborative communication. It's talking to those groups, it's listening to those groups, it's trying to come to a mutual understanding of what, what engagement looks like for everyone. Not, engagement to everyone doesn't look the same. Some might define engagement as participation in athletics. Some would say engagement is participation in bands. Some would say that it's simply attendance i- in school. So, i- it's really, again, I go back to, it's all about communication. We have to meet, we have to talk, we have to listen and, and somewhere in there, it is the answer.
I guess I feel we need to, you know, not necessarily treat them differently, but treat them all great, you know, and, and the same. And, and I guess everybody should just be treated equally and the same. And obviously, like I said previously, different students have different goals in their school career and need to look at those and, and try to accommodate those and, and teach them, you know, for what they will need to be or wanna be in the future. And, and I guess one other thing that I'd like to point out is we need to look at the community and obviously, everybody in town is hiring and we need to see what jobs are hiring and, and push our kids to learn how to do those jobs, stay in the community, hopefully. I mean, obviously, you can't chain them down or nothing, but, you know, encourage them to stick around, you know? And, and there's jobs here, there's good places to work and there's great people, you know? And that's probably why we live here. So, and like I said, our kid needs to be treated a little differently. I, I, one other thing I would like to get started a little more in high school, which in my business, we've had quite a few kids do youth apprenticeships and, and it hasn't been from Black River. It's been from Whitehall and it's been from Blair Taylor. And, you know, I think youth apprenticeships are a great tool for kids to, to take on. They earn money doing it. They learn tons of things that they can use every day of their life. And, you know, the biggest thing about kids is when they graduate and get out the door, they have to know kind of a goal of what they wanna do with their life, you know? Yeah, you could go to college for three years and still not know what you wanna do, which that's not very efficient, so. Hopefully, that answers your question.
I believe as a school board member, we should be reaching out to parents more, getting their input to bring back into the meetings. I've seen from past school board meetings, I haven't been to the last couple due to scheduling conflicts, but it does seem that certain board members just blow parents off when they're speaking. And that's not the way to build a relationship. That's not the way to build a community. It's a very good way to make people feel isolated. Being able to reach out and talk to people, even if you don't agree with what they're saying, but reaching out and talking to them and trying to find a common ground, trying to find something to work with is what's important. I had read once before that when a school district dies, the community dies. It's not long after that if there's no school in an area, the business up and leaves. Businesses up and leave, then there's nothing to keep a community together. So it all ties together, getting everybody from parents to business owners, to teachers, to school board menor, members, to administration, all being able to talk to each other and find that common ground. Thank you.
I think we as parents and as, and as a community in Black River Falls, we need to stress primary education. I've heard so much talk about secondary education and how important college is and the, and the people that are, the kids that are on track for college, oh, they wanna go to college. I went to college for one year. I was one of those kids. I didn't, I didn't like college. I hated it. Hated every minute of it. Joined the Marine Corps, loved it. Got an education in the Marine Corps and then you know what I did? I went back to college. And I took the classes I wanted to take. I took, I, I, everything I wanted to do, I took it all 'cause it was paid for. But I took a separate route. I took a different way. So, we need to stress, primary education is how you get there. Primary education because you might not go to college. That might not be for you. So we need to, we need to make sure that these kids, just because college is not for you doesn't mean you don't wanna do well in primary school. That's where you get the building blocks. If I didn't, if I didn't take all my classes in primary school, I can't get into the military. So you need to finish all of it. I, I, I'm sick of hearing from, from people, "Don't worry, they can't fail this grade." That is absolutely ridiculous advice. I actually heard that. "Don't worry, they can't fail this grade. Next grade, you really gotta worry about." No. Let's get rid of that.
Diversity goals. Diverse students. In Black River Falls School District, I have taught Narragansett, Narragansett students. Narragansett is a tribe of Rhode Island. And we have one of the teachers in Black River Falls School District, Ariel Hall. She's from Narragansett Tribe, Rhode Island. Her children are Ho-Chunk and Narragansett. And Ho-Chunks, Onaida, Apache, Lakota, Nokota, Dakota, Mohicans, Minamni, Cheyenne. All these students study in Black River Falls School District. Cheyennes are not Ho-Chunk at all. Narragansett are not Ho-Chunk. Ho-Chunks are not Narragansett. Their each tribe is a different nation. They have their own language, culture, and tradition, and jurisdiction. And I have become extremely successful among them altogether because I pictures and understand their culture. How do you want to learn? And they never hesitate to tell. So therefore, we must know their way of life, how they want to learn, hang out with their parents, their relatives. In Black River Falls, they are the largest minority. But we are not in Bronx, New York. We have a different kind of a diversity over there. Here, mostly Native Americans. And they have gone very serious trauma, historical trauma. And in Black River Falls School District, Eli Young Thunder never hesitated to teach in a history class about the historical trauma among the Native Americans. Therefore, we will respect their cultures, their identity, their language, their jurisdiction, their way of life. And I have done that and I know how to work with them and I can involve the newer teaching staff which are coming over the last twelve years. I will encourage them to learn. Go to their communities. Go to their funeral at least. I have attended like a fifteen funeral. Any, anytime any Native American die in Black River Falls, I show up right there. Because once Bill Clinton says funeral, remind me my own funeral. There, I have a thirty-second okay? So, I would say to the newer teachers, I will encourage them to go with me to the Native American tribes, get to know them. They, especially Ho-Chunk folks, they say in the end of the email, "Pine gigi." And I go like, "What is pine gigi?" It say, it, it means, "The thing you have done for me, I will never forget rest of my life." That is the meaning of pine gigi in their traditions. Thanks.
Okay, we are going to be done with questions for the evening. And now I'm going to ask each candidate to give a closing, closing statement. And you will have a four minimum, maximum, or four minutes maximum time. And we're actually gonna start with Nick Halsted.
Congratulations.
I think I drew a short straw here, but. Okay, in closing, I guess the reason why I am running for the school board is, I guess there's three, the first three reasons are my children. The second reason would be 'cause I'm an employer and I feel that, you know, the children are our future and we need, like, like I said, everybody in town's hiring, including the school. And I feel another thing about the school, if, if a student shows up and wants a job here, they should get presidents over somebody from a player 'cause they might hang around more than two years. And I think the teachers that are here twenty and thirty years are the ones that are the most valuable. Like I said, I don't know anything about running a school, but I know a lot about running a business and I feel that, you know, they crisscross a lot and it's the same thing. And I have different perspectives than most all the people that are on the school board. And I feel that, you know, something different is good. More of the same is not good. So, that's why I feel I would be a valuable asset to the school board. Thanks, hon.
In closing, I had several different people come up to me over this, well, last year. Really, I've been the most active with school board meetings than any time in my kids' school careers. Mainly because I was asked to come and started voicing my opinions at some of the school board meetings. I had people come up to me, "You sure do complain a lot. They see issues and you have to bring them up to head." Tried fixing them through the open comment. Did not seem to be as a receptive area within the school board meeting. That's not the way that gets changes done. So I had people ask me, "Are you gonna run?" My wife and I talked about it. I'm still active in the school district. I coach the youth wrestling program. I'm going on my fourteenth year doing that within the school district. And it's not just the school district, it's all communities. Elma Center comes in. I've had kids from Melbourne and Neillsville come down. So, I still wanna work with the kids. And I still want what's best for the kids, for the students. And I think being on the school board is a way that I can help facilitate the changes that I believe need to happen. Thank you.
Everywhere you go in the nation, and this is what separates, I've talked to people, a lot of people from other countries and it, it doesn't seem to be like this in, in other places. Most other places seem to be a top-down thing. Everything seems to come from the top, all of the orders and everything. And, and if, if somebody doesn't tell somebody to do something, it doesn't happen. So, I think that this board, this board is supposed to represent the community. Elected individuals, that's why we have sheriffs, county sheriffs. They're elected. There are local elected law. They're elected. There are local elected law enforcement officials. They're different than city police. They are elected officials, and they re- and, and they are beholden to us, the voter. The school board is just like that. They're beholden to the voter, and I think they've lost the will of the community. I think that it's, that it's kinda gotten muddled. And I think some of the members that have, that are on the board have been there too long. And I think there needs to be some new people on there to, to represent the community, to represent us. The taxpayers too, not just, not just parents. The taxpayers have a stake. If you own property, you have a stake. So let's vote some new people onto, onto this board, and let's make some changes for the better. Thanks.
I am running for the Black River Falls School District, because I am very concerned. Sixth graders have gone to the seventh, seventh has gone to the eighth, ninth grader has gone to tenth, eleventh have gone to the twelfth. During the pandemic, his school was closed. I want to make sure, did they cover the entire syllabus? Therefore, I will be hanging out, sitting with curriculum director, the person who make a syllabus. Let, let me know all, all the chapters of the chemistry have been taught. His school were closed. Have you taught through the Zoom or through online? How many of them attended, not attended? Have they capacity to understand the online rather than in person? I want to fix this important problem. And the rest of the problems, we already talked about. The major one is, there is a gap in the education of one year. Even though pandemic knocked down the world two years, and it's still knocking us down, don't know how it fold. So therefore, we are all ma- all, uh, uh, alert, and that is the major purpose for me to run for the elec- in this district board, to fix the lost elec- uh, lost education. The education was lost. I want to fix it, for sure. And of course, I want to meet with the community members all the time. You know, we have a couple of funeral homes in Black River Falls. I show up. I don't need invitation. My fellow human have died. I'm here to pay respect, and then that is how I make lot of friends. They say, "Man, what kind of a man you are. You come in every funeral." I say, "Because that funeral remind me my own funeral." I want to be here to say goodbye. If you are too harsh, I can walk out. They say, "No, no, 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 you can hang out with us. Thank you for coming." I want to be involved in, in, in the, their darkest period, in the brightest period, in their laughters and tears. Because once Robin Natego in eighteen thirty-five, he said, "Tears speak unbearable pain and unspoken love." Thank you very much.
All right, thank, excuse me. Thanks to everyone who came tonight, and thanks for everyone watching at home. Um, thanks for your, your time, your interest, uh, your passion about, uh, about our district. Um, I'm running because one year ago, I, I applied for an appointed board seat, and I, I've learned, if there's one thing I've learned in the last year, is that one year is not enough time on the board. Um, I, I've learned a lot about how a district is run, um, all the challenges that go with it. I've spent, I, I, I couldn't even guess, hundreds of hours, I'm, I'm guessing at this point, um, preparing for meetings. I, I prepare very intently for the meetings. Um, I, I see a few people in here, and I'm sure online, that I've, I've had, uh, a lot of conversations with, uh, as I prepare for my meetings. I, I thank, thanks for all of your time for reaching out to me. Um, I, I promise to continue that. Um, I hope to continue the, the work for the next three years, to continue that, that community engagement. Um, and again, my, my key points, I really believe that, uh, student engagement, collaboration, communication, this is what we need to do to continue to improve our schools. Um, i- if you have answers to any of the questions we were posed to tonight, I, I would love to hear them. Um, my contact information is on the brf.org website. Um, and I guess final reminder, uh, the, uh, primary is next Tuesday, February fifteenth. I'm looking around to make sure I got that right. Um, thanks for all your time tonight.
I do have a couple last-minute things. Um, just wanna remind everybody that our sixth candidate, Ron Cork, uh, was unable to join us tonight, 'cause he self-elected to quarantine. Um, like Brad had mentioned, just like, like to thank all of you candidates for coming out tonight and sharing your insight and time. And also, all of you that have joined us online and here, um, face-to-face, thank you. Um, please, please go out and vote next week, Tuesday, February fifth, for our school district primary.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, Tuesday, February fifteenth. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.